And we are recording the meeting.
Do I make a motion to close executive session now, Ed?
Yes, you would.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the executive session?
Madam President, if it please the council, I'd like to make a motion to close the executive session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A roll call vote, please. Mr. Garum.
Yes, thank you, Ms. President. James LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Gary Cody.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
President Dixon.
Yes. The motion passes. It is now 6:21.
I think there should also be a motion to seal the minutes of the closed session.
Would that come during the public session or no?
Yeah, it would come during the public session.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I think we're... Aren't we in public?
You're in public session. You would do it next.
Okay.
You seal it after you come out of it, just like you are now.
All right.
And I am looking for my clerk.
It would just be a motion to seal the minutes of this and just to seal the minutes of this closed session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of this executive session?
Madam President, I'll make the motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Roll call vote, Mr. Garum.
Member Ludwig.
Yes.
Member LeBlanc.
Yes.
Member Shockley. Member Shockley?
You're on mute.
Yes.
Member Cody.
Yes.
President Dixon.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We ready to begin the public session now?
If we could wait one second while Mrs. Lavoy comes in.
Okay.
Mrs. Lavoy, can you hear us?
I can. I'm trying to get on.
You're on now, but I haven't got your video. I do not have your video.
Mr. Town Manager, I thought we were in public session. That's why we just voted to seal the minutes. I believe that has to be done in the public session in order to be effective.
And I was gonna call the meeting to order, then have a roll call, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then come out of the executive session and seal the minutes.
Thank you.
Are we all set, Mr. Wazika?
We are, ma'am.
Thank you. This meeting will now come to order at 6:23 PM. Welcome to our community members who have signed into Zoom for this meeting. Ms. Lavoy, will you please take the role?
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. Will you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Town Council met in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2 pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation. We met to discuss the Arnold Road landfill update and to review the Second Amendment to landfill closure and bud filling operations contract discussion of status with Attorney Joseph Fosside. I will report that no votes were taken during the executive session. It is our pleasure to welcome Mr. Murray. We are on Agenda Item B4. I'm sorry, B3. Mr. Wazika. I'll call him, Mr. Wazika, to speak about the Economic Development Commission, which is in our Charter, Section 1340, and in our Coventry Code, Article 2, Section 15-14 to 15-23. In addition to membership from the public, I will also appoint a member of the Town Council to be on this commission at a later date. Mr. Wazika, will you please discuss the Economic Development Commission for us, please?
Well, I want everybody to know that we are looking to reconstitute this commission. It's been a number of years since we've had it. It's something that is sorely needed. It's... We had some minor success with the last time. I think there needs to be a bigger effort put into it. We've got to try and get as many talented individuals to apply for this commission as possible. The applications for it are on the website under Boards and Commissions Applications. I'm also going to be posting a new one right on the front page. So if anybody's interested there, as well as we are going to put an ad in the paper in reference to this, that we're looking to get people onto this Board of Commission. So the sooner we can get a number of applicants, the sooner we can get this board started to try to bring this town into the 21st century. So that's where we're looking to go to, and I'm hoping that we have people out there that are interested in joining.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. I would ask every member of the Town Council to recommend business leaders in the community to fill out an application and apply to be on the Economic Development Commission. When we receive the applications, we will vet each individual who has applied, and we will select the members for the commission.
Actually, Madam Chair, it's the Town Manager chooses those commission members.
Okay. I thought it was Town Manager and Town Council, but that's fine. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on Item B4. Mr. Luke Murray is a member of the Coventry School Committee, and the chairperson of the School Building Committee is asked to provide a short presentation about the work of the School Building Committee. Welcome, Mr. Murray.
Good evening, Madam President. Thanks for having me. I'm going to share my screen quick. Ed, could you give me a capability, please?
Give me two seconds, sir. You've got it, sir.
All right. Can everybody see my screen and that slide?
Yes. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thanks for having me again for another council update on the School Building Committee Stage Two effort. Hopefully, you all had a chance to review the video that I produced a couple of weeks ago for the update that I wasn't able to give due to the inclement weather. I'll try to keep this brief. I know I only have 10 to 15 minutes to go through, so without further ado, I'll move forward. So the last update really focused on the Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School, the effort the School Building Committee had done there, along with the architect from architecture firm Studio J. This was the concept that had been preferred by the School Building Committee, and that the architect continues to perfect as he moves through the process, and I'll discuss a little about that in a minute. So this was just an image from that plan, and we were really excited to move this forward. Again, this is going to be sort of the cornerstone of our submission for the Stage Two, but it's not the only thing that we're continuing to focus on. So key items since our last update, we have had a School Building Committee meeting. It was very productive, and this one really focused on the district-wide enhancements and other strategies, which we'll go over in a minute. And that's buildings other than ASFMS. So we really wanted to make sure that we had a discussion about the other schools, because we have made clear that although the majority of our effort has focused on the middle school, we do want to touch every facility. And so that's something important for us going forward, and we wanted the architect to weigh in on it. In addition, the architect had a meeting on the 9th, which I also attended with Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School teachers, staff, and administrators to talk about various things, but primarily the interior layout of the building shell that I had mentioned, that concept, which is shown here. And then we have a meeting set up with PFM, thanks to the Town Manager and Town Finance Director, tomorrow. We'll be discussing a variety of topics, but really looking at how we work potential financing on the process of project, and also potential reimbursements, which we'll go over in a minute. Well, I talked about the district-wide enhancement strategy. Well, what does that mean? All of the other schools beyond the middle school, which is shown here. So obviously, Western Coventry, Washington Oak, Blackrock Elementary, the high school, Ty Oge, and Hawkins Hill. One thing I want to preface is that we know we've been discussing about the elementary schools on the eastern side of town, other than Washington Oak, maybe ripe for some sort of potential, when I say potential, consolidation in the future. We don't know yet. That's a larger discussion with the community that needs to be had. Some may be for that, some may be against. So I want to be very clear, that's not on the table as part of this effort. But I do think it has to weigh in at this point as part of a larger strategy, because we need to make sure that we're thoughtful in how we spend our dollars, if we're going to spend our dollars. So, you know, with that thinking in mind, you'll see as we kind of go through some of the iterations and what the architect has proposed. So just to revisit, we're considering the project's scope, size, and programmatic needs with obvious funding limits, which we always have. But it's also important, and this is the conversation we'll have tomorrow, how does that weigh with our debt cliffs and other smart strategies for the reimbursements? We obviously have logistical constraints, you know, move every time we touch a building, you may have to move a class or the whole school. So do we have the capability to do that and displace those students? So some of the district-wide enhancements that we've talked about at our previous meeting with the architect are what they call hive, high-impact visual enhancements at the school sites. So the architect really weighed in on a few items. One of them is painting all the schools, and I'm talking about a full paint package, not put a little paint on the walls and call it a day. This is painting inside now, very thorough, that will hopefully maintain these buildings over the next five to 10 years. Ceiling replacements, lighting upgrades, so moving the LEDs where we don't have them. Again, that affects our operational costs moving forward, because obviously, energy costs money. We can save that money. Minor exterior upgrades, the parking areas, there's some deficiencies in the parking areas as far as ADA, potholes, et cetera, and select ADA improvements. Americans with Disabilities Act, making sure we comply with federal law. The other thing you hear a lot about is NEAS, New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They just submitted their report, their 10-year report this past March, and it identified the gymnasium floor, the bleachers, and typically, the HVAC, which some of that's going to get taken care of now as part of the COVID-related strategies as issues. And while the gymnasium floor may not seem like a priority, we're on our last coat there, and it's going to become a point where we're going to have to shut the gym down if we don't address it. Other related items at CHS, including science labs, a new generator, select improvements to the parking area, and then some ADA improvement. So what is... The committee's had some feedback to the architect on what was presented. One of the concerns was focusing only on visual enhancements and other than high priority, other high priority needs, and we know we have many. I mentioned specifically the well at Western Coventry, which is in very sad shape. And my point being, I don't want to paint the walls and then have the well go down after we've already spent substantial money. So, and there was other comments along those lines from the committee for other individual schools. I think he got the message, and we'll incorporate that in the strategies moving forward. There was also comments about whether we should invest more in high school, given discussions over, recent discussions over losing students to outer district programs. Obviously, that's not the only piece of the puzzle, but something that is a piece of the puzzle, and we need to kind of weigh in at this point. Like I said earlier, we also have to balance how much we intend to spend, knowing that we have a cornerstone project at the middle school that we want to move forward with. And then we did agree with the concept of limiting investments at the elementary schools until a larger strategy is determined. Now, I say limited, that doesn't mean we don't do any strategies. That just means we need to be smart with our funds and not overspend, knowing that we may have to look at either larger enhancements, improvements within the next 15 years, or, like I said, that consolidation strategy. So one of the last things, and I'll kind of go through this, the reimbursements. We went through this pretty extensively, and I know this is a key point that you'll want to keep in mind moving forward. We currently get 42.8% of state housing aid for reimbursement for this type of effort, meaning that if for every dollar we spend, we essentially get 43 cents on the dollar back from the state in housing aid. Because of the $250 million bond that was passed by voters a couple of years ago, there are some kickers that allow percentages to be increased. Under the projects that have been identified, we would qualify for 10% additional kickers. The Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School qualifies for the educational enhancements and health and safety deficiencies. The CHS also qualifies for these two. Now, not all of the schools qualify for 10%. Some only qualify for 5%. However, the way the system works is that if you have a project, one of the projects, one of the sites, as part of your total project, that qualifies for a higher percentage, you get that percentage across the board. So what the architect has recommended is that we actually include two projects in the Stage Two. First project is the middle school project standalone. The second project is all of the other schools lumped together. That way, they can tag along CHS's 10% reimbursement. So effectively, for all of the sites, we'd be approximately 53% total reimbursement, which is actually very good. The state minimum's 35%. I was shooting, hopefully, for above 50, and I think we're there. So based on the projects we currently have, we'd be slated over 50% reimbursement. The caveat to this is one thing. We need to start construction by December 30th of 2020. As all of you know, in the governmental system, especially with construction, it moves very slow. So we've talked about a number of strategies going forward on how we deal with schedule. I won't belabor it tonight, but I want you to know it's in process, that we're going to be thoughtful about it, and we're creating a small subcommittee to deal with this. Luckily, we have a couple members of our committee who are directly in the construction industry. They deal with school projects, and I think they'll be a unique asset to this effort. So we'll be having that meeting in the next couple of weeks to discuss the schedule and ensure we can hit that December date with start of construction, if we were to.
Do you mean 2021?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in three weeks, or?
No, no, no. I apologize. Is that what I had on there?
Yes.
Sorry. It's been a long day. This was a... Yeah. I apologize. 2021, which, yeah. No, I'm sorry, 2022. I put good information out there. This isn't it. To clarify, 2022. But if you think about a potential vote, let's say, come November, we're going to be well into 2021, that gives us about a year to bake a project in design and get it out for construction. Not too much of a hurdle for the smaller projects, but would be a bigger hurdle for some of the, for the middle school, which would be a larger project if we move forward. So certainly can be done. I think we can put a shovel in the ground by then, but again, it has to be thoughtful and laid out, and obviously, this correct date matters. So I'll make sure to correct that moving forward. Just summing up here, the last thing I wanted to update you on is that there was a session at the middle school with administrators, teachers, and support staff. I think it was very productive. I did just have a chance to observe about the interior layout of the middle school based on the current design. So I know there's a thought, and I've had some questions from both council committee members, has have people at the building level, boots-on-the-ground level weighed in? And the answer is they have at this point. So there were some really great comments at that session, and the architect is going to incorporate those moving forward as part of the Stage Two. So where do we go from here? Upcoming items. I have asked the Town Manager to identify a day, and also, the Council President, to identify a date for a joint meeting of the committee, School Committee, Town Council, and School Building Committee. I think that's, that'll be a productive meeting where we can present the 75% draft and have everybody in the same Zoom session, because I want to get all the questions on the floor. I think everyone will have questions. I think it's more efficient if we do that in one format. We're going to be meeting with PFM tomorrow to discuss the finance strategies. We're going to be giving ongoing updates through January, so I want you to stay tuned. Whether I do those through video or in the normal council format, I know you have a lot of meetings coming up, as do we, so I'll try to make this as efficient as possible on the updates. And the School Committee, School Building Committee will be solidifying key projects with the architect, and that's ongoing. So whether it be the middle school or the other projects I identified tonight, we're going to keep working through those to perfect them for the Stage Two. So at that point, Madam President, I'll open up for any questions that the council has.
Thank you. Could you move your slide so I might be able to see all the members? Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any members of the council would like to ask any questions? Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you. So I know that you've made yourself available in different forums, Mr. Murray. I did have some questions that I had emailed over and in relation to some of the public sessions you made available on Facebook and YouTube. Can people still access that, or how can they access that information at this point? Where can they go to see this?
It's a good question. I did put it in a Google Doc, which I shared back to council and the school committee, and that, hopefully, you did receive that link, and your questions and answers were on that sheet. Did you get it?
They were, yes.
Okay. So I will make sure that that, either the link or a static document, I think a static to the public would be best. At least get that out, even the social media and some centralized site on our website. And then what I'll do is, as I get questions, I'll continue to make static copies. What I don't want is people just typing away in Google Docs. So, but I will make sure that is made available.
Mr. Murray, is all the documentation on the Coventry School website?
Unfortunately, not. I want it to be. As you know, our site is a little bit lacking. I'm going to have to have a discussion with the school superintendent. We did talk a little bit at last meeting about the new site and whether that would be a more appropriate format. But whether, whatever it is, I need to get it up and publicly available as soon as possible.
So, Mr. Murray, if you send me a copy of all of that data, I will get a page set up on the town's website and get it there, so at least the public will have access to it.
That's excellent. Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Murray, just in line with that, how can, how can the public stay involved? You know, is there a recommendation on how they can provide feedback? Or is it just, you know, let's visit the website first, and we'll kind of take it after we're able to get the documents out? What, how do you see them staying involved outside of the people on the media committee?
That's another really good question. So one of the things that we're working on right now is that website, which I think would be helpful. I've been actively engaged in social media, in particular, Facebook, because it seems to be a pretty good format. So I've been trying to pump out these videos and take any questions I have, and encouraging people to email me directly. As we move forward, we're kind of in the nuts and bolts stage here. So a lot of it's the committee trying to work out the plans, and we only have about another month and a half left, which is going to go quick with the holidays. So I want to make sure that we continue to do that, but also get the public outreach going beyond the Stage Two, because a lot of the Stage Two is kind of nuts and bolts at this point, but I want people to stay involved. We are coordinating an effort for more public engagement, because I want people to know that this is not the last time to weigh in. The Stage Two is specifically a document to present to ride with a lot of information to solidify the reimbursement request. But there's going to be a ton of time through the Stage Three as we go forward and leading up to any potential bond to get additional input through the process. So I want people to know that that's ongoing and will be ongoing.
Thank you.
And during the month of February, the first meeting in February, Mr. Murray will be presenting, and we will, as a council, vote to approve the Phase Two submission to Ride. That will not require us to commit to any bond at that point in time or to any money, but it will allow us to submit the plan, and what we anticipate will be the cost.
Correct.
Mrs. Shockley?
You. Lucas, if we're thinking of making changes to the high school, and we don't need to have all those changes until Phase Three, do you think that Mr. Coward and perhaps other teachers, who I know are currently working on curriculum development, could help us streamline that plan for the high school? You know, maybe two projects could move forward together, where we're improving the curriculum and creating a building that will support it, if there are any changes that we make to the high school?
I would say tentatively, yes. Like, so one of the things we're looking at is the science lab. So science labs today are not the traditional science lab of yesteryear. There's not a lot of built-ins, a lot of its flex space. There's a lot more adaptability. So yes, those spaces in particular could be done in tandem with curriculum development. As far as the whole school, I would say at this point, we're really looking at those hive-type elements or critical elements that we can fund, say, with shorter money, because we know a lot of the money is going to be potentially gobbled up if we move forward with the middle school effort. So, and it's still substantial, but we want to invest in things that are going to prolong the life of the school. We have made some substantial investments in CHS. But I would say that we always want to try to look at curriculum and the building improvements hand-in-hand when we can. So that will be part of, in specific, the science lab moving forward.
Other questions for members of the council? Mr. LeBlanc?
Mr. Murray, thank you for your presentation tonight. Really appreciate it. Couple of questions. I know you're giving the Building Committee report, but one of my questions is, if bond is to get passed, are we allowed to use it for sport field, like sport baseball fields, football fields, anything outside of the building, or is it only going to be allowed for the building construction?
No, that's a question that comes up quite a bit. You are allowed to spend money on the exterior of the building. So for instance, in my private practice in the yesteryear, I did a lot of work on the Potterburn School in Pawtucket. One of the things when I met with Ryan Joe de Silva, he specifically called out the site as an element they did not invest enough money in. And they had, they had actually set aside funds just for the site. So things like parking layout matters, drop-offs, bus drop-offs, they'll weigh in on all that, that is reimbursable. Sports fields typically, if it's new, a brand-new facility, yes. If it's renovations, no. So something like the middle school, one thing would be important. We're going to allocate some funds, obviously, a chunk of money for the exterior of the building. But moving forward, whether we want to include any fields at the middle school, we know that there's some there. I don't know how well they used, they are at this point, and that's something I need to follow up on with the rec department and the school department on what actual use has happened there, because fields have exploded in town since, you know, when that field was originally built. So, like, yes, it is reimbursable depending on the type of project.
I appreciate the insight on that. And then can you just speak to a little bit about the reimbursement, sharing the ratio? Because I believe it's already gone down once on us, where we could have gotten, I think it was 44, and now we're down to 42.8, I think is what you said, without the additional 10%. So can you just speak to that and where we might be if we don't do anything? I'm assuming it would go down even more.
I think it's an important point, because we were, when I was originally started talking about these projects, at 44%. And because of revales and formulas, and this is the way the state works, right? They look at the taxing capacity of a community based on income and house values and a variety of other factors. Coventry, I've always said, falls inside of this weird middle ground. Everybody seems to think we're a wealthy suburban community. It's a very diverse cross-section of where I am. And so we're kind of getting hit on both ends. From the state aspect, they look at our tax capacity as pretty healthy. So one of the things that we could see moving forward, especially with housing prices going a little crazy and houses selling in Coventry, that our state share may continue to go down. And as many know, our funding formula from the state has also been impacted. You know, we've talked earlier this year about the cut we sustained. So I don't know if that's going to go down, but I know for a fact that that 10%, that 10% kicker, which, you know, is only going to be available that 2022, is likely to go away. And originally, I thought that may come back with another bond passage. With COVID and the way the state's budget is, I would highly doubt it. So if we don't take a bite at the apple now, we're going to definitely lose that 10%, I would say, for the foreseeable future. I would say for the foreseeable future. And we may continue to see that housing state share go down, which means that if we're going to take this, just to be clear, five years from now, that and we have no choice because, you know, the schools are just, you know, falling apart. Too bad, it falls on the taxpayers. So that's an important point.
Thank you.
Other questions from the members of the council? Ms. Ludwig.
I just want to check, Mr. Cody, I think I saw your hand raised. Would you like to go before me?
No, I'm all set. I don't have any questions.
Okay. I didn't want to go out of turn. So not a question, but a comment. The runs looked really cool. So I'm hoping that, you know, some members of the public will start getting engaged. Thank you, Mr. Wazika, for offering to put some of this out in a location where people can start looking at this. I know we haven't gotten quite into the numbers. That will also be a very important aspect for the people that are asked to approve something like this. So I look forward to the next session. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate a comment that I've made when I've been on the committee. As we consider making some improvements at the high school, I would like to see a member of the high school staff be asked to be a member of the building committee. We do not have a high school representative on that committee, and I think it's extremely important as a way to get consensus concerning what we want to do there.
I agree, you know, and it's being worked on.
Excellent. Glad to hear it. Any other comments? Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Murray. We appreciate the time you're taking to educate us all, and we look forward to hearing many more presentations from you and the members of your team. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, we're on agenda item C1. Will you please read the agenda item for us?
Resolution Appointing Council Member to School Building Committee.
Thank you. I am nominating Mrs. Kimberly Shockley to represent the council on the committee to replace former member Greg La Bosinier on the committee. Do I have a second?
I would like to second that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ludwig, question?
Just to congratulations. I know that you've been an advocate on that side, so I look forward to some of the information you bring back.
Very much. It's really exciting group to be able to join. So thank you very much, President Dixon.
We need to have the roll call vote, just to make it official. Okay, roll call vote, please. Then you congratulate her again.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mrs. Shockley. I know you've been attending meetings of the committee, so you're getting up to speed very quickly. So I hope you enjoy being on the committee. I am, there were two council members on the committee and I am the second person. I've been on it since the inception, greatly enjoyed being a participant. Madam Clerk, would you read the next resolution, C2?
Resolution Appointing Edward Wazika as interim acting town manager for six months.
Okay, would you read the complete resolution, please?
It resolves that the town council of the town of Coventry hereby approves the reappointment of Edward Wazika as interim acting town manager for six months. A weekly stipend of $932.40 will continue to be added to his current MIS director compensation, total compensation to equal the town manager's budgeted salary.
Thank you. By charter, we can appoint and reappoint a person as an interim or acting town manager for six months. By our newly approved charter amendment, we are required to have an active search. We do have an active search for a town manager, and we expect to have our consultant Bernard Lynch from Community Paradigm Associates from Plymouth, Massachusetts, to present us with resumes from interested candidates immediately after the new year. Do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Wazika as interim acting town manager for six months?
Madam President, I would be glad to make the motion to reappoint Mr. Wazika as interim town manager for the next six months.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
The motion passes. Mr. Wazika, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We're happy to have you. We're certainly happy to have you with us. How long has it been right now?
The official after Steve left, this puts me into going towards year three, but it's almost three years since Graham left and I was doing it in the beginning of that. So pretty much close to three years as interim. I think I'm the world's longest, oldest interim.
Well, you may be the longest, but we're not going to add the word oldest to it. Okay? Okay, next. Next resolution, the C3. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Discussion on Contract for Interim Acting Town Manager Once a Permanent Town Manager Is Appointed.
Thank you. I have submitted this agenda item. Our interim town manager does not have a contract. Our town managers have always had contracts, so there is a precedence in having a contract with our interim town manager, who has been with us over three years in his present role. This agenda item is to determine if providing a contract is desirable. It is not to determine the contract terms. If desirable, we as a council will have our legal counsel draw up a draft contract for the town council's deliberation during a future executive session. I am requesting that the interim town manager have a contract in order to ensure continuity of operations once we have a new manager. This will be a limited term, our limited time contract. Mr. Wazika will speed up the transition to our community and its issues with the new town manager by providing training and orientation. He will also continue to work on projects that the town council assigns. In his role, he will report to the council, not the new manager. Next, when we interviewed the last group of candidates, I noted that even the candidates from the smallest towns had deputies or administrative staff. We know that candidates do research under town, listen to council meetings, and determine if the community is even one in which they want to work. By having our interim town manager have a contract, we are saying to the candidates, they are willing to, we are willing to invest in the right candidate, and we will provide an experienced person during the transition. So I'll now open this up to a discussion as to whether we want to offer a contract to Mr. Wazika. Mrs. Shockley.
So if we were to have a contract, how would that work with already having a charter resolution concerning an interim town manager? That's my first question.
Contract would address the transition from acting town manager to some other title, which he would have when he is working with the new town manager. So there'd be a transition clause in it.
So I guess I also want to go outside of our current situation where possibly we would have an interim town manager who is not in his fifth or sixth appointment to said position. So what if we? I just worry if we have someone contractually obligated to stay, the contract should also read, we don't have to have them stay.
Correct. That would be something that we would ask our legal counsel to consider to put into a draft. This would be a limited time, perhaps maybe it's only one or two years, and it could be something in which we as a town council could decide that after six months, it would be enough time. It depends on who we bring in, how experienced this person is and what they need to do. And we also have a lot of very complex projects going on, as you well know, and we need some expertise, such as the whole sewer management plan. And it would be very difficult for someone, I'm saying it's very difficult for someone new to come into our town, take care of the operations of the town, learn about our town, learn about working with the town council, and be able to immediately tackle some of these projects that we don't want to slide immediately. We want to have them continue to be worked on.
So this would just be for having a contract for Ed, not for possibly a future interim town manager?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam President?
Cody.
Is there any flavor amongst the council to, in Ed's case, and to address Mrs. Shockley's concerns moving forward, to create an assistant town manager's position for Ed to move into once a new town manager is found? And to keep that assistant town manager's position, in case we ever end up in this situation again, we could appoint our assistant town manager as the interim town manager, who he could then apply for the job full time, or we could go with a search organization such as we are now. But I think it would create some continuity. It would, and it would create some history and longevity in that position moving forward and help to protect the interests in the town of Coventry.
It certainly is a good option. We do not have in our charter, there's nothing in our charter that calls out for an assistant town manager. If we called, if we change the charter to have an assistant town manager, we certainly could have applications for that position and we could vet the person and assign it. This is not going into that, I guess, type of position at this point in time. What we want to do is ensure continuity, and then once we see how this works, we can then, as a council, determine whether we do want to permanently have an assistant town manager or not. And at that point, we'd also have to look at our finances to determine if we could even afford it. But it's certainly an option to consider for the future. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Just two comments or questions. The current charter allows the town manager to participate in town council meetings. Will this contract allow both if we do hire a town manager and Ed to participate in town council meetings going forward?
I think that that's a good point, and I think that that would be a council discussion when we have an executive session, once we get a draft contract.
Okay. I just, I would want Ed to be able to participate. And this might be a question for Mr. Gorham, but would there be any charter related issues with having Ed's new position reporting to the town council where our charter doesn't only says that the town manager does? You're on mute.
You're on mute, Mr. Gorham.
Excuse me. I was just looking up the charter amendment that was approved by the voters relating to the town manager, acting town manager and so forth. I know I wrote it, but I cannot remember exactly what it said, but that would dictate whether or not you could do something like that. My sense is that you could, if the council wanted to do it. I think you can, the council can probably create a position if it wants to. Again, there are funding issues and things like that, but there's nothing in the charter that precludes you from creating the position. You are, you know, the authority on, in what capacity people are employed by the town. You can make the jobs, you can create them, certainly at that level.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure we're in compliance with the charter, that's all. Yeah. Thank you.
When we, when we ask for a draft contract to be developed by legal counsel, and I believe it would be by Mr. David D'Agostino under the direction of Mr. Gorham, we certainly would be giving some kind of transitional title to Mr. Wazika. Ms. Ludwig.
Thanks, President Dixon. Less of a question, more of a comment. I think this is extremely timely, and I am in favor of looking at this. There are several people who have resigned, and I think the aspect of continuity is extremely important for us. As you mentioned, there's a number of projects going on, and having someone like Ed be able to help with the transition of a new town manager seems extremely important. So thank you for putting this forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from any member of the council? All right. It does look like we have consensus to move forward to request that Mr. D'Agostino, legal counsel for the council, for the town council, for the town council will develop a draft contract, which we will discuss during the executive session as soon as he can put the details together for us. And at that point, you'll be able to discuss. Okay? Any other questions? All right. Ready to move forward? Madam Clerk, C4, please.
Resolution Renewing the Emergency Declaration.
Okay, Mr. Wazika, would you please speak to this resolution?
First off, there is a typo in it, the ever popular new year and forgetting to advance the year. So at the end of the resolution, it speaks of January 1st, 2020. That obviously should be January 1st, 2021. So that's going to have to, Ms. Ms. LaVoix?
Yeah. The one that was done up again today says June 1st, 2021. Shouldn't it be January 1st, 2021?
Actually, you would probably want to move that to February 1st, 2021. That date has to be, I would make a suggestion that someone makes an amendment, we do that, and then that way Mrs. Dixon can sign that. It will correct the date. The emergency declaration will be in effect until February 1st.
Mr. Wazika, I have a question for you. At the bottom of page 6 of 19, it says ratified by the town council of the town of Coventry on the 14th day of December, 2020, at a regular town council meeting. Are we able to change that to say ratified by the town council of the town of Coventry on the 14th day of December, 2020, at a regular town council meeting to continue and renew the emergency declaration until February 1st, 2021? So we actually would put in that last statement that we are continuing and renewing the declaration until a particular date.
That would be, that would need to come from Nick. That's his area.
Nick, would that be appropriate? Because it clearly spells out the end date.
Yes, I'm writing it right now. Either I or the town clerk will have that resolution ready after the meeting.
Okay. And the next question is, Mr. Wazika or Mr. Gorham, would it be appropriate for us to extend this emergency declaration to February 28th instead of February 1st? It's two months instead of one.
I believe, I believe there's a 90-day limit on this, so the six, the two months would, I don't believe would be an issue. We could do that.
Mr. Gorham?
Oh, yes, I agree. So I've written it to say to continue and renew until February 28th, 2021. Is that satisfactory?
I believe it's appropriate. Otherwise, we're back here every month, and it does seem that we're going to need at least two more months of an emergency declaration.
Probably.
By members of the council. Would we offer an amendment to that, Mr. Was, Mr. Gorham?
You can. You can, in fact, why don't you so move?
I'm offering an amendment to the resolution on page 6 of 19 to read ratified by the town council of the town of Coventry on the 14th day of December, 2020, at a regular town council meeting to continue and renew the emergency declaration until February 28th, 2021. Do I have a second to the amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon? Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
I believe that after we offer an amendment, we have to vote on the resolution as amended. So I make a motion to approve the resolution as amended to read to continue and renew the emergency declaration until February 28th, 2021. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read item D1.
Applications for Renewal of Campground Licenses. Water's Edge, 119 Peckham Lane. A Yoho Campground, 249 McManus Road. And Hickory Ridge Campground, 584 Victory Highway.
Mr. Wazika, would you like to speak?
These are, these are our normal annual renewal on the, on, on the campgrounds. It's, it's just a routine formality. I'd like to make note that Mr. LeBlanc asked a question last week, or last meeting, in reference to dates of birth on these applications that you see. I was reminded that those are not out to the public. Those apps do not get seen in the packet. They're only in your packet. They are, they are whited out and cleared out on anything that goes out publicly. So they were already being done, but I just wanted to let you know on that. But yeah, this is standard routine, and I recommend we just, we approve them.
Any discussion by members of the council? Any questions? Ms. Ludwig?
I just have a general question, and it, I guess it applies to all three. So as they're going through the application renewal, and this was actually true for the last meeting as well, there's a section in our packet that says Coventry Police Department has no issue with this application. And I was just wondering if you could maybe comment, Mr. Wazika, on what the, what the process is. Are these supplied to Coventry Police Department? And then they specifically comment, or they have to come back to you in a certain amount of time? Or how, how is that process between us and them?
It's, it's sent down to them a request either on the business, in some cases on the owner or the applicants as well. And they're doing a background check. They're also checking their records to confirm that they've had no issues with the location. They've had no problems. They're not turning into a problem child. And, and we get that back in a relatively quick turnaround from, from the PJ. They've been doing that. They do these backgrounds for years, and they've continued to do them for us and, and give us the feedback that they've got. There's been on occasion, they will have had issues at a particular location for adult beverages being dispensed, and they come back on that if there is an issue. But most part, they come back clean, and they're very good at what they do coming back with these quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion for renewal of the campground licenses for Water's Edge, A Yoho Campground, and Hickory Ridge Campground?
Madam President, I would like to make that, propose that resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay. Item, Agenda Item E1. Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution Approving a Change Order with Garafalo Contract for the Landfill.
Mr. Wazika, any comments?
Yes, this is, this is the final piece of the landfill capping and remediation of that former town dump. There was a substantial amount of additional work that was done on it via, over the contract. There was a long-term negotiations that went on, and there are additional funds that they requested. They, they, they have proven that they are, they are entitled to it. The contractor has signed this agreement already, as well as the landfill. As ever, as most people know, it's a, it's a 60% responsibility of the town, 40% of the primary responsible parties, several other industrial companies that were involved in the dumping on the project, and they've already signed off on, on this, this contract amendment. I'm recommending that we approve it. This will put us in nearly finalizing this project and getting it to the point where we can start working on getting a solar contractor for up on top and get some, generate some revenue for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for amend, for the Second Amendment?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the Second Amendment change.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Oops, sorry, Tim.
I'm happy that everyone's willing to second. Mrs. Shockley, I believe, seconded. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please read Agenda Item E2.
Resolution for Town Managers' Proposed FY 2021 Budget.
Mr. Wazika, your comments?
Yes, ma'am. I am, I am asking that this be tabled. The reason for that, actually a couple. We received additional information late Thursday from the state on some possible new numbers involving not necessarily, not just the school, but also from reimbursements for meal tax, hotels, telephone, as well as the state is within what looks like to be days of finalizing their budget, which in turn will allow us to have definitive numbers that we put in. We've already taken two bites of the apple on, on this budget. I would much rather have definitive numbers, finalized numbers from the state, and not be putting out something that we're gonna have to just go back and adjust again if these numbers change. I'm looking at if the numbers are finalized as quickly as they say they will be. I will be looking forward to having a special meeting on the 21st, sorry, everyone, involving just this proposal to move the budget forward. But I don't think it's appropriate at this point to, to put it forward without having those, those numbers. We're this close to getting final numbers from the state. So I'm recommending, I will, I don't even want to put one forward, and I'm asking it to be tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. I make a motion to postpone to December 21st the resolution for the town managers' proposed FY 2021 budget. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you. Discussion? Any comments by members of the council? Mrs. Shockley?
Just to make sure I'm clear, Mr. Wazika, it sounds like we're expecting to be reimbursed for perhaps some lost revenue from the state? Or that's a possibility from what they've told you?
It's a possibility what we've read in the paper. I mean, the number, we've seen some numbers, and they seem to indicate that we're not getting anything additional on the school side, yet they keep talking about an additional $40 million in school aid. They, and they've made mention of another $50 million as well. So until those numbers are actually finalized, I don't know what they're getting. I don't think the school, at this point, is feeling those. They're not gonna get anything additional, and that $900,000 that's been cut will be the final number that they will receive, $900,000 less. But until we know that for sure, I don't think we should put any, move anything forward until we know those numbers. And that should be coming, like I said, this week. They've already been approved by the Finance Committee, and they are moving forward quickly, and allegedly it will be done this week. So that's why, but on the, on the town side, we're looking like we are gaining some, back some revenue on some of those line items that we get reimbursed for.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. Ms. Shockley?
Can I just add to that? So just to have a better understanding of the town's budget, would this be money that we'd expect, we expect on an annual basis, but we didn't get this year? Or would this be some?
Yes.
Mr. Cody?
Yes, ma'am.
You lit up. Do you have a comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Any other comments by members of the council? Okay. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Cody?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, you keep on lighting up, which is a good, maybe because it's Christmas. All right. Roll call.
I'm touching that line. It's, it's just, it's just my light blinking, Madam President.
Roll call vote.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Item Agenda F1. The meeting is now open for public comment. Mr. Wazika, is there anyone on the line?
We actually have 47 people in today's attendance, which is a good number, more than normal. But no, no one has their hand up. I will simply ask if, is there anyone with a question, comment that they would like to make in front of the council? Going once, going twice, three times. Mrs. Dixon, Mrs. Shockley did have her hand up, though.
She does. Mrs. Shockley?
You're muted.
If next week, we're going to be discussing the actual budget, will, and will we be voting, and we'll be voting to put that forward? Can we move public comment for this section? Can we put it someplace where public comment can be before we vote on that?
We can do that.
The meeting, the meeting, I, if, doing the meeting next Monday will only be for the budget. So there will be nothing else on the agenda except that. So.
So before we vote is all. Thank you.
That's certainly acceptable. If the other, if the members of the council would like to do that, we can do that. Mr. LeBlanc?
Just for everybody calling in, I just want to clarify one thing. Are we gonna be having another meeting after the 21st for a hearing? So that the public, not just during public comment, but can actually have a public hearing on this third potential budget? I just want to at least ask the question.
There, there is a mandate that we have a public hearing, and yes, there will be a public hearing.
Just wanted to confirm. All right, thank you. Because it's the third time, sorry.
Charm, I hope.
And just as a reminder, we also have a meeting on the 17th to discuss the 21-22 budget. But the meeting on the 14th is to, well, the 21st is to discuss the 2021 budget. So we just have to keep all our budget numbers clear. But we've got many decisions to make within the next couple of months or so.
Excuse me, Madam President?
Cody?
Thank you. Just for clarification, the council will have an opportunity to amend the manager's budget on the 21st if, if the council sees fit, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just needed a point of clarification.
Thank you for bringing that up. The council always has the ability to amend a manager's recommended budget. That is correct.
Thank you.
So we have, no one else wants to speak? Public comment, Mr. Wazika? No other hands have been raised?
There are still no hands raised, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you to the 47 people who are on the line. We hope that you found the meeting informative. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Madam President.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. And as a reminder, we will be convening on the 17th to have a very high-level view of the 21-22 budget by both members of the school committee and the superintendent and also the manager. And then on the 21st, we will be convening to a special meeting to discuss the 2021 budget. Thank you so much for joining us, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.